Welcome to the League of Women Voters 2016 Election Coverage. I'm Vida Flores with the League of Women Voters of Marin County. Our timekeeper today is Ann Laser. There are four candidates running today for the Sausalito School Board. Two of them have chosen not to participate, and I'm here today with David Suto to my left and Deborah Turner to my right. We'll start with a two-minute opening statement from David Suto, and we'll alternate questions from David to Deborah. Would you like to begin, David?
Sure. I'm here today because I'm running for school board because I feel that our school board currently is failing our children. For me, public schools are sacred trust, and we have a responsibility to teach the children of our community to the best of our ability, and that's not happening right now. I feel this responsibility because my family history holds in it both heartache and success for my family going to college. My grandfather was the son of a coal miner and a farmer who grew up in the Depression and had the dream of going to college, but had that dream extinguished due to family medical emergencies which depleted his college fund. He ended up as a farmer and a church custodian, but he was a lifelong learner who could quote the philosopher Spinoza and a self-taught botanist who knew all the common and Latin names of the plants where he lived. He made sure six of his eight children went to and graduated from college by driving them to the library in the next town every day after school. One of the children became a world-renowned chemist, making jet fuel less explosive. And I feel that children in Sausalito and Marin City deserve to have an education and the ability to go to college, and right now, the school board's failing to provide the school.
Thank you. Deborah?
My name is Deborah Turner. I have lived in Marin City for over 20 years. The Sausalito-Marin City School Board is a topic of great controversy right now. David and I are running together as a slate, and we hope to rebuild trust. The community is fractured. The Marin City District School is turning out kids who simply aren't prepared to go to high school, let alone college. And there is an unfortunate conflict between the charter school and the district school. This is something you've seen all across the country, and David and I are hoping to get in there and rebuild trust and rebuild a curriculum that will prepare these students to make the most of their futures. I've been volunteering in this school for over 20 years and have seen that resources have been pared away. We have one, less than two teachers, for 43 middle school children. They only get math every other day. It's such a bare-bones program that we cannot hold our heads up and say we're doing the most for these kids. We've got to turn it around, and that's what David and I are hoping to do.
Thank you. Our first question will be two minutes, and we'll start with Deborah. And the question is, what would you like to achieve during this term in office?
It's a four-year term, and what I think is of utmost importance is to, first of all, really rebuild trust in the community. There has been great controversy of late, which you perhaps have read about in the Independent Journal, and without trust, there's no possibility for collaboration, for cooperation, and we're really in a broken state right now because the absence of trust and the tremendous upheaval that these children have been going through, you know, from a change in campus to declining resources to a general animosity between the charter school and the larger community. And it's just, the people who suffer are the children. So my first goal, I think David and my first goal, is to really rebuild that trust and get everybody to agree that we're on the same page, which is preparing these students, giving them the best chance they have at a successful life, to be a resource to all of us.
Thank you. David?
Yes, I think Deborah and I agree that trust is number one. Really, especially the community in Marin City, has felt like they've been abandoned time and time again by the school board. So trust is paramount. I also think we need to really build lines of communication between the school, the school board, and the community at wide. I don't think the community realizes what is happening in both Willow Creek and Bayside MLK and the fact that our majority of the kids are not learning. So we need more transparency. We need the community to be aware of what's happening at school board meetings, and we need to not be failing the kids.
Thank you. The next question will be, what are your priorities? What are your priorities for spending state educational dollars that fall under local control? And we'll begin with David.
I think, you know, the number-one priority is to make sure that that money is being, as much of that money as possible is being spent in the school room. We have a tremendous amount of overhead in our school district right now that weighs heavily on our, if you look at our numbers of what we're spending per child, however way you split it up, we have twice the overhead of some other school districts, and that money is not being spent in the schools for teachers, for instructional materials, for instructional programs. And so we need to find how to prioritize money to be spent in the school room.
Thank you. Deborah?
Yeah, I agree with David. We have the unfortunate situation of being a very small district, and there's one charter school in Sausalito and one district school, TK through eight, in Marin City. And it's an unfortunate top-heavy budget issue in that, you know, we have to pay for the same number of administrators that other districts have. And I think we need, I would like to see the district become more creative about the use of those resources so that we end up spending as little as possible on administration and as much as possible in the classrooms with the students, with text, you know, technology, with science, with math, with cutting-edge programs that will really prepare these kids. And I think that we can only do that when we really make the budget understandable, comprehensible, transparent, and that's, I think, one of the first steps. It has to do with trust, and it has to do with everybody focused in the same direction, which is making as much as possible available to these students.
Thank you. The next question will start with Deborah, and the question is, what are the most effective measures that can be taken at different grade levels to address the problem of bullying and sexual harassment?
To be honest, I am not up on what the current thinking is on how to do that. At the last school board meeting that I attended last week, there was talk about the issue of bullying, and there are processes in place that teachers and administrators and community members can use to see instances of bullying and to deal with it in a way that responds both to the needs of the bullier, which are significant, as well as the needs of the person who's bullied. And I think that, it's my understanding that Bayside MLK has a sense that that is in hand. I haven't heard anything about sexual harassment. I do know that it's forefront in everyone's mind, and I do believe that as a school board member, I would want to be made abreast of any sorts of incidents, but I don't know what the protocol is. I'll learn.
Thank you. David?
Yeah, I am also not an expert in bullying or sexual harassment at the school. I will say, my wife did teach at Bayside MLK for three years, and I know that there has been bullying and some sexual harassment in the past. These are young kids. They don't necessarily know what the boundaries are, and they, you know, the school staff needs to set clear expectations for the kids and hold them accountable and make sure that kids feel safe reporting things that are happening because they don't always happen in front of the staff. If they happen in front of the staff, they need to be reported, they need to be dealt with, and you know, and it is a situation where we need to support the kids that are being bullied, but we also need to find out why the kids are bullying kids because there's reasons for that. It may be something else that's happening in the school. It may feel that they don't feel supported in their school. It could be that there's something going on at home, and the school needs to work with the children to make sure that that stops and create a culture where children feel safe at school.
Thank you. The next question will go to David. The goal of Common Core standards is to equalize opportunity for all kids. How is that working? What do you see as barriers to effective implementation, if any?
So Deborah and I have been talking about this, and you know, this is a difficult question. It's the heart of, one of the central issues at Sausalito-Marin City School District for years. How do we make sure all the children get an equal education? You know, right now, the statistics say that 75% of the kids or so who are coming from Marin City aren't learning right now, and how do we support them? How do we make sure that they get the education that they deserve while making sure that the rest of the kids also get a quality education and are prepared? And it's tough, and I don't have the answer right now, but I think Deborah and I and the rest of the school board, when we're elected, will work on that and put it as a focus as opposed to dealing with other distractions. You know, how do we get all the kids a good education? That should be our focus.
Thank you. Deborah?
Well, the Common Core is new, relatively new, and still baffles some parents, some teachers even. And I think one of the obstacles to kids really thriving in that curriculum is that we need to spend special efforts to make sure that the kids, based on their background, can identify with the materials, can identify with the curriculum. And by that, I mean something as simple as really making African-American models available in coursework so that these kids, if they can't relate to the heroes, to the tales, if they don't see themselves in these stories, then it's difficult to engage them because a big part of education is building self-esteem. In addition to that, I think when the Common Core first went into place, I was tutoring fourth-grade math, which is a tremendous task, I'll tell you. There's a lot of material that these kids have to master. And it was great because at that time, they had a teacher, a math expert, in helping the teachers teach the Common Core. So I think there has to be a lot of staff development and to help these teachers really be effective in the classroom with the kids, with kids, one-on-one kids who need to be enthused about what they're learning. And I think that those are some of the things that David and I feel will really be, really help us turn this school around.
Thank you. Next question for Deborah. How should the district respond to climate change?
Wow. Well, I'm a graphic designer, and one of my clients who I've been working with for years is the National Center for Science Education, and one of the things they're doing is really, really putting it out there, helping teachers teach climate change, helping them stand up against climate change deniers. So, I mean, in Marin City alone, we flood. The roadway floods, the waters rise. It's very easy for kids to see the impact of rising water levels. So to me, I don't know what, I am unfamiliar with what the program might currently be, but I think that, I feel it's really important because it's these kids who are going to fix things, you know? They're the ones who are really going to make, save our future. And it's a wonderful opportunity for project-based learning, and I am deeply committed to it being a key part of the science curriculum.
David?
So, yeah, I think you can approach this in several different ways. You can have projects in science where you go and measure tides, or you go and look at past tide measurements and see how they're rising in the Bay Area. Like Deborah said, it's very easy to see the effects of tides on our waterfront. There's a marsh right in Marin City. There is, you know, there's, across the road, there's the bayfront. And there's certainly a lot of opportunities in both science class and other classes to look at both the effects of climate change, what can we do on a personal level to mitigate climate change, you know, energy efficiency, what can we do around the house? How can we think about how we live our lives to prevent climate change? And then maybe even chances in language arts class to write essays about how climate change is affecting them, the children, how they can advocate to make sure that the world is a place they want to live in when they have children.
Thank you. David, if elected, what would you do to green our schools?
So, I guess that's a difficult question. The schools right now, they have, I think they're doing a fairly good job at different, I don't know what you want to call it, green. Both schools teach the kids how to grow food in a backyard. Both schools do some level of energy conservation. I know that we have capital projects where they're looking at increasing the energy efficiency at both schools. And, you know, certainly the schools could look at additional ways such as installing solar panels on the campuses. Marin City has pretty good light at the campus and a fair amount of open space in certain areas.
Thank you. Deborah, to what extent is the community involved with the district? And if elected, what measures would you take to do so?
Now, I'm going to go back and answer the green energy question. Okay. Just not that I have anything great to offer, but one of the things that's really phenomenal at both Bayside MLK and at Willow Creek is that the Conscious Kitchen is providing GMO free, great food on both campuses, and that's just a wonderful way to sensitize the kids to what it means to grow healthy food. And I, that's just, I think we're the only school in the country, or the first school in the country, to have such a program, and it's just a phenomenally wonderful way to get great food in these kids and to encourage them to think about where the food comes from and how to make it safe. As far as, I think, solar panels, I live in Marin City, not far from the school, and we just, in the townhouses, we just are installing some solar. I think that's something that really makes sense to look at. And aside from that, though, I am unfamiliar with the green nature of the portable schools, the portable buildings that are used for the elementary kids in MLK, Bayside MLK. I do think they have solar at Willow Creek Academy, the charter school, but I'm pretty sure that was installed maybe five or six years ago. And I think from a money standpoint, it makes good sense, from a health standpoint, it makes good sense, and I'm hoping that we will, as school board members, be able to really look at those, at what's possible.
Thank you. Deborah, to what extent is the community involved with the district, and what measures would you take to do so if elected?
Well, that's a huge centerpiece for David and I. I mean, it's really, kids, if parents aren't involved, then education is a real challenge. The kids, because school is their second home. And I know that Willow Creek Academy, the charter school, has a, it's a stipulation that parents have to contribute, I'm not sure how many hours, a month of time, and that's just a wonderful thing, and I would love for that, a similar expectation, I'm not sure that's the right word, be in place at Bayside MLK. I think that, I know that the community of Marin City is concerned about their children. I think there's been years of frustration and disappointment and anger that I think we need to work together to overcome. I think that it's all, it's really well-founded, the disappointment, the anger, and I think that we can, through communication, through being sensitive to parents' time constraints, scheduling meetings when parents can be there, welcoming their contributions to the classroom. I see an increasing number of parents in Marin City becoming involved, and if we open those doors and really, in an honest, transparent, respectful way, engage them further, then I think we will all win.
Thank you. David?
Yeah, I agree with all of Deborah's points. There, you know, there has been a lack of community engagement with the school board, typically. Parents get very frustrated when they go and talk to the school board and they don't see any measurable response or change from their comments. And I do see, as Deborah has, that there's a lot of energy right now in the parents right now. They want to contribute, they want to help out. They're just waiting for someone to engage them on the other side and ask for their help and perhaps tell them what needs to happen, what needs to get done, where they can be helpful in the school. You know, they've had a hard time creating a parent group, but that seems to be starting to happen now. But the parents need to feel like they're being listened to, and the meetings are definitely an issue. They happen early, they're very inconvenient. They either start right when you want to have dinner or right when you're putting your young children to bed. And right now, we have no way to engage in a meeting other than going and sitting there. We don't have any audio or video recordings of these meetings. So I think that would be a good thing, too.
The next question's for David. Disparity persists between South Asian and Caucasian students on one hand and African-American and Latino students on the other. What steps would you take to close the achievement gap?
So, I think that's a huge question that has gone unanswered for years in our school I think, you know, I am half-Japanese. I had a father who really said to me that education was your number-one priority. I'm not sure that that's always the right case, that there might be other things that you should be doing besides studying. Maybe there's, you want to make sure you have a balanced life, and, you know, sometimes maybe it's better to be out building friendships and bonds with your community rather than always studying. On the other hand, you need to make sure that you're learning the things that you need to learn. And we have a problem where parents want their kids to learn, but because perhaps they were educationally challenged when they were children, they don't know how to help their children install that, you know, the basic skills of how to learn. And that's really the school's job, is teaching kids how to learn and also teaching the parents how to teach, help teach the kids to learn.
Thank you. Deborah?
Well, the achievement gap is a national issue, and it's interesting now to see all the incidents around the country where school districts are raising up, as in Connecticut, talking about, you know, this is unacceptable, and it truly is. We're just, we are robbing ourselves of such important future citizens by not preparing them for success. I think a big, I think learning from the get-go, little ones, preschool is really important for socialization, for being excited about learning, for feeling safe and nurtured in a schoolroom environment is really important, to changing those numbers. Also, I think it's so important that children see themselves in the learning, the materials. Somebody who looks like me, somebody who talks like me, somebody who I share a background with, that's absolutely essential because otherwise, you know, what's the message? What's the subliminal message there? I think those, and as David said, I think helping parents really understand how critical their role in the child's, everything from homework to being excited, to being praised, to being celebrated for their achievements. I think that we need a multifaceted approach to engaging students, in making them excited about what there is to learn, and they need to see themselves in the materials.
Thank you. Next question is for you. And what are your plans to overcome the digital divide between one school and the next?
Oh, that is such a good question because I fear that Bayside MLK is severely lacking in computer equipment. I know that kids in Reed School get their MacBook, Air MacBooks, whatever they're called, and they take them home and they have them for the year, and that needs to be the case in this school district. And it's so unacceptable that that is not the case because if these kids don't, I mean, all you do is give them a computer and they'll be, you know, whizzes in a very short time. They need to feel that that is their tool. And I honestly am not aware of what, how many computers there are at Bayside MLK, but I know that it's not right, it's not up to snuff, and we have to change that. These kids could learn to code like way faster than I ever will, and that's essential. It's the new language. It doesn't mean they all have to be techies, but it certainly means that we need, the school district, needs to make these kids, make available to these children, the tools of the future, the tools of now, and I'm very committed to making that happen.
Thank you. David?
So, I know in the past, the school has tried to provide laptops or iPads to the children. You know, there can be other barriers such as internet access. I think, and a lot of it could be access at home, whether these kids have a device at home, whether it's a laptop- at home, whether it's a laptop or an iPad or desktop computer. And whether that computer is attached to the internet in, in a format where they can have broadband access. So they have, you know, access to instructional material at, at home. I mean, you're, you only have a very limited amount of time at, at school to, to access things like that. And, and at home, these kids could be, you know, obviously, they're going to be doing lots of other things besides instructional material. But you, when they're not able to get, you know, normal, what we would consider normal high-speed internet at home, then, then they're, they don't have that opportunity. They don't have the opportunity to learn something when they want to. They don't have the opportunity to see educational videos or instructional materials and do research at home. And that's certainly something that they can do on their own if they have the opportunity. They don't need a teacher there showing them how to do that once they get, once they have the basic tools to learn online.
Thank you. David, what do you think about the values embodied in the New State Elementary and Secondary Schools Act?
I have to say, I'm really not informed on that.
Okay. Deborah?
Is that 55? No. I, I'm unaware as well.
Okay. And that brings me to another question. The California voters will be voting on a proposition regarding charter schools. Can you tell me your position and?
No, I don't. I am unaware that a charter school measure is on the ballot. I do think that charter schools represent a tremendous challenge for school districts. In Sausalito, Marin City, it's great that, that the charter school has arisen, that it's a diverse camp, program, that it is bolstered by parent support. And I think that what's happening in our district now is evidence of the conflicts that can arise, that the, the, that a district school can be somewhat endangered as a result of a charter school. And I think it's something that districts have to be really nimble about, you know, welcome the, the opportunity for, for choice that, that charter schools offer, and at the same time, protect, as David and I want to do with the district school, so that that school can't be thrown in front of the bus of not enough money. That district school really needs to be strong and let the choice between a charter school and a district school be a true choice of two campuses, two facilities that are really aimed at sending our children out into the world fully equipped. I know David and I agree on that and are committed to that. That's really why we're running.
Yeah, I, I'm unaware of what the legislation or the measures might be that are out there right now. Yeah, I would say I agree with everything Deborah just said. And I would just be really concerned when reading about measures, about how that, how they affect the balance between charter schools and public schools. Each of them right now has benefits and drawbacks, and we need to make sure that there aren't unintended consequences anytime you change the balance between funding and, and educational standards that are required between the two schools. It's just really important to know all of the facts and all of the implications when there's changes.
Thank you. And David, are vocational programs in your district adequate for those who are not college-bound? And how can non-college pathways to employment be created or considered at the middle school level?
So, I'm, I would say that in our core curriculum right now, we probably have no vocational programs at the middle school level. We do have some after-school STEAM programs, which I guess would be the closest thing we have to vocational project. Personally, when I went to school and the school, the school district where I came from still had a, had a basic vocational skills program. They had STEAM program, they had shop, they had, they had what you would call home ec, sewing, cooking, you know, basic, these aren't just even, they're not even just vocational skills, they're just basic life skills. Making sure that kids know how to run a house, know how to work, know about basic safety. And I know that TAM has some vocational programs. It would be great if we had more. It seems like a number of years ago, California decided to disinvest in the vocational system. There is some VOTEC at, at the community college level. But, you know, still in Pennsylvania, they have vocational schools. So if a child decides they don't want to go to college for whatever reason, it should not be, you know, forced on them because they, because they have an inadequate education system. But if they decide they want to go and become a welder or a, or something else that doesn't require college, that they have the opportunity to go learn that and be ready to, to join the workforce when they're expected to.
Thank you.
I'm unaware of any vocational programs at either the charter school or Bayside MLK. And I think that, I know that Willow Creek Academy has a project-based curriculum to some degree, and that seems to me a good approach, both from the standpoint of engaging students and letting them find their interest in, in working on a complex problem. I'm sort of inclined, though, with, with the Bayside MLK community to really push these kids into, towards college, because I think that the, the opportunities are far greater. And you can choose, you know, community college at least, which is a great deal. So again, I don't, I'm not aware of the thinking on middle school emphasis on vocational programs, but I agree with David in that we're talking life skills here, home ec, shop, all those things. I mean, there really are, I have heard that there are 20-year-olds who don't know how to boil water or, you know, and so from the life skills standpoint, I think we can do nothing better than help our children be independent and in all ways.
Thank you. And the next question will be to you. How can your district retain good teachers?
That's a really good question. As you probably know, the charter schools are free to, they don't have to hire union teachers. They get to negotiate with the teachers about their pay and their benefits, which is an interesting big difference between a charter school and a district school. I think that the, and ideally, David and I talked about this not long ago, ideally, your teachers live in your district. You see them at the grocery store. I mean, this is, and Bayside MLK is very interested in, the LCAP, the Local Accountability Program, is, is specifies a community school, which means that we have a, a wraparound of services that come from outside the school. And I think that we can, we can really make our whole, our whole system better by involving all sorts of resources in bringing these kids forward. Yeah.
Thank you.
So, I, teacher retention is an interesting thing. At Bayside MLK, most of the teachers have probably been less, there for less than 10 years, or even maybe five years. They have really high turnover, which does not help the kids feel like secure, feel like they have a teacher that's going to be there next year, that they, so that they can involve their trust with those teachers. So, teacher retention at Bayside MLK is an important issue. It's also an issue with building culture at the school. You know, what, what is the culture at school? And if all the teachers are changing every three or four years, how do you maintain that culture? I do think that finding a way to help teachers live in the community if they choose to is very important. Right now, between the two schools, there's probably only a couple of teachers that live in, in the district. And I think at Bayside MLK, it's making, it's not so much right now a matter for teacher retention, it's not so much a matter of salary, because they're fairly well compensated. But it's making sure that the teachers feel that they're supported, that they're heard, and that, that they have the proper resources day-to-day to teach in class, that they don't have to do five different subjects in one day, where they can't possibly teach well, teach what they feel that they should be teaching at, and not have to work 10 or 12 hours a day, five or six days a week, which is, which is really at the middle school level right now, what they have to do. And it's just, creates teacher burnout. And it needs to, we need to figure out how to support our teachers.
Thank you. This ends the question portion of our forum today. But before we go on, I want to remind voters of some important details. The election is November the 8th, Tuesday. It's coming just in a few short weeks. We're 51 days away from the election. The last day to register to vote is October the 24th. And if you'd like to see this again on video, you can watch it at MarinLWV.org. That's the League of Women Voters of Marin County's website, MarinLWV.org. If you'd like further information on these candidates, as well as other propositions, measures, and county measures, you can visit VotersEdge.org. You add your name and your zip code, and it'll find a ballot that's particular to your area. Thank you very much. We'll start with our closing statements in reverse order. Would you like to begin, Deborah?
Sure. Thank you. Let's see, I, I, I hope that David and I will be elected to the school board. And I, and when we're there, we will work first and foremost to rebuild trust in the community. We will work for both schools. We would like to see test scores rise. We would like to see, see parents involved. We would like to see a real sense of opportunity. It's a great opportunity now, because consciousness has been, is raised about the achievement gap. Consciousness in our local community has been raised about the importance of community participation and of cooperation. And I would like for the next year, for this coming year in December, for us all to be working together for the children, to, to bring them up into the, the future. Because that's, they're, they're, they're going to be driving the bus soon. So I hope you'll choose to vote for David Suto and Deborah Turner.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would echo Deborah. We really would like to both get elected to the board so that we can work together with other people on the, on the board to, to rebuild trust and, and a strong bond with the community. And to get, to build Bayside MLK into a true community school, which engages the students, the teachers, the parents, and the community at wide. And really have a discussion with the entire community about what direction we want Bayside MLK to go in. I personally think that we have a lot of room to grow at Bayside MLK. And like Deborah said, we need to start with trust. And then we need to start with a lot of communication. And then we all need to sit, get, get down and, and get, building a better school. And building a better school district. You know, Willow Creek has a lot of positives right now, but they still also have a lot of work to do at bringing up their educational rigor. And, you know, we need to make sure that our children are prepared, once they're, get through eighth grade, that they're ready to go to TAM and Redwood. And that they're prepared for those schools and to compete with the children coming from Mill Valley and Reed Middle School.
Thank you very much. And I thank you voters for being here with us. And I also thank our timekeeper, Ann Laser.